Good heavens, I've been talking and the hot mic's been on all of us.
That would always be something.
All right. Are we ready?
Ready.
Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Kent County Board of Commissioners meeting. Today's date is Thursday, May 10th, 2018. It is 6:00 PM. We'll begin today with roll call.
Thank you. Good evening. Commissioner Skaggs.
Here.
Kornike.
Yes.
Womack.
Here.
Bolkowski. Tallin.
Here.
Hennessy.
Here.
Melton.
Here.
Mast.
Here.
Breevy.
Here.
Coleman.
Here.
Voorhees.
President.
Honstein.
Here.
Stack.
Here.
Holter.
Here.
Commissioner Jones.
Here.
Morgan.
Here.
Antor.
Vonck.
Here.
Chair Saulfeld.
Here.
Mr. Chair, you have seventeen members present, two absent. You have a quorum.
Thank you. I did want to note Commissioner Antor did call me and let me know that he has a meeting with his constituents in Algoma Township that's at the same time, which is why he cannot be here tonight. I will next call on Commissioner Voorhees to lead us in invocation and the pledge of allegiance.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. It's so great to see so many guests in our gallery tonight. It was really great. Just before our meeting, they had a good get-together just to, again, talk about the excellence in action in Kent County. And we've got so many here to give thanks for that why we have such a great county and why we are enjoying all the great things we do. It's because people go above the call to make sure that they do above even those expectations. So, we're thankful for so many here and thankful for so many throughout our county who give their labor and time to improve our government. Let's give thanks together. Heavenly Father, again this night, we come together as commissioners to carry out the work that we've been elected to and called to, to make life better and safer and more enjoyable. And you said we should have life and have life abundant, and we can have life abundant because of the abundance of goodness that is in our community, and we thank you for that. We thank you that Kent County is based in its values and in its priorities, and we're just thankful that so many people who can call Kent County their employment, that we're thankful for that. So, again, tonight, we lift up those who lay their life on the line to protect and to guide and keep a great community, and we're thankful for all those who provide the services that are necessary for good government. And so, in all that, we give thanks, in Christ's name, amen. Let us say the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Voorhees. We will move then to agenda item number five, which is our special order of business area, and we have two items tonight. Our first is to hear from the Grand Rapids Whitewater, and I know Richard Bishop is here, as is our former chair, Sandy Frost Steenstra. Are you going to start?
I am going to start.
Okay. Good afternoon.
Thanks. Thank you very much for giving us this opportunity to talk to everybody tonight. This project has been really exciting for us, and we're at a place where we thought it was a time to give you a nice update, and so, Richard Bishop, who is the CEO from Grand Rapids Whitewater, will give us the update.
Thank you. Good evening, Richard.
Thank you, and thank you to the commissioners here for giving me the opportunity to give you this update tonight on what I think is a project that's a true game changer for this county and this region. You know, when a project comes online like this, you have to have so many partnership, public-private partnerships to make it go forward. And a lot of work had been done in that regard before I got here back in August, and, you know, the relationship that was established with the county, the relationship that was established with the city, and now with all the federal agencies, U.S. Fish and Wildlife, DEQ, and DNR, and even at the federal level. And you've got one of my best friends in the audience tonight, Steve Carey, and Steve has done a wonderful job working for us for the last year on helping us get funding through the federal level, and I really appreciate the work that he's done. And all the partners here that have contributed to this to date, it's been an outstanding process, and it speaks to the commissioner's opening remarks about this community just doesn't sit around and think about what we're doing today. They're thinking about what we're doing in the future, and this river project can really be a game changer. And, you know, it started back as far as the county, when the county started working on the disaster resiliency grant years ago, when this project first started, that was really establishing that first process of getting all the right people at the table, even though it was not successful, getting all the right people at the table to push this project forward. And then, from there, the Metro Council provided, went after a grant, the RCPP grant that provides funding not only for the river project and river work, but addressing the watershed outside of this reach of the river, which gets into Kent County and all the agricultural areas. So, again, all these cities and the counties are participating in that process, and that is a big deal. And then, the other piece of it, I know that the county and the city and MSU have been working on that park site. It's really critical to us as we move forward to construct a project, and then, after post-construction, it becomes a park. So, again, thanks for all the work that the county has been doing for this time to keep the project moving forward, and it's partnerships like that that are so critical as we continue down that road to get post-construction and bring the project online. This project has three main goals. The first goal is to open up this river and make it accessible for everybody. It's a riverbank, and we're working really hard to accomplish that. So, we'll open up more access to the river, and it'll be a much friendlier river for the community and region to use. And the second one is certainly to improve the habitat on the river and in the river, and we want to do that, and that's so, why that's so important, is the RCPP grant will not only help fund the construction and taking out the beautification dams in the lower reach of the river, but it will also address a lot of the agricultural runoff in the county. And there will be funds available through a master plan to help do that. So, again, all the cities in the county and townships in the county that are participating, that's a big deal. And then, the last one is economic development. You know, when you look at this project, we did a study that said this will have somewhere between $10 million and $15 million in economic development on an annual basis, and that's just through tourism. And there's about 7,500 hotel rooms in the county. If my numbers are right, about 23% of those are in the downtown area, about 50% or somewhere around 50% are in the city, and the rest of them in the county. Bottom line is, I think it's about 20% of the hotel rooms in the county. And, you know, the county will be collecting hotel motel tax for that, and then, their percentage of the revenue that's generated through overnight stays within the county. And then, on top of that, during, when we finish post-construction, is the ability to bring $285 million of new construction online after the project is completed and create about 1,500 jobs. That's pretty strong for this community. And then, in addition to that, through the construction process and even as we start getting ready to put bids together, we want to shop local first. We want to make sure that as much sourcing that we can do in this community, we do it. Typically, on a project like this, about 40% of construction dollars, those are the monies that we're raising to put back into construction, should stay in the county, and we want to continue to work and help format our bid process to where we can get that done. And then, getting into the design of the project, it's really broken up into two reaches. The upper reach, which is basically from Ann Street down to the Sixth Street Dam, and that's where this adjustable hydraulic structure will be placed, and then, the lower reach from Sixth Street Dam down to Fulton. Part of the design, and I know that, I think the last time I was here, I did mention the adjustable hydraulic structure, before we can actually start working in that area around Sixth Street Dam, we have to put a replacement dam, and that's called the adjustable hydraulic structure, up between Ann Street and Leonard. That dam has been vetted by the Corps of Engineers, Great Lakes Fisheries has been involved in it, DNR has been involved in it, DEQ. And the reason we have to do that is, number one, the current Sixth Street Dam is a sea lamprey barrier, and we have to make sure that we have the replacement dam in place before we breach the Sixth Street Dam. And so, that's going through the permitting process as we speak. And then, the other piece of it is, we have an endangered species, which is a snuffbox mussel, and so, we're having to deal with a snuffbox mussel, we're having to put a conservation plan in, and so that when we get into the river and start working, we have somewhere to place the snuffbox once we get in there and start working. So, that plan has been being developed, and we have to have all the permits in place before we can actually start working in the river. And that process includes going through U.S. Fish and Wildlife, through DNR and DEQ. So, it will be vetted by all those agencies before we can get in the river. On the funding piece, I'm going to let Sandy get back up here and speak a little bit about funding, and I'll get back to the schedule.
So, it is a pleasure to be here and talk about my day job. While I've enjoyed volunteering for all y'all, it's nice to be talking about what I do every day. And so, we started the funding for this, we did the feasibility study two years ago, and the feasibility study really looked at raising money from three distinct sources, from philanthropy, which would be primarily local, but also would be regional and national, regional resources, which would include potentially the state, hopefully the county, and the city, and other organizations like that. And then, also, we're looking at national resources. As we mentioned, Jim Carey, Steve Carey, is here with us tonight, and he's not, he's here for a different reason, but he has been working on our project as well, so it's been a great relationship with him. So, our capital campaign actually kicked off on April 25th. We are thrilled about our campaign co-chairs, Megan Saul, Mike Van Gessel, and John Green. They are all wildly enthusiastic about the project and are putting in hours that I wouldn't necessarily expect from volunteers, but probably the most important thing is that we have more than 49% of the funding committed, and so, we've just got a little ways to hit that 50%. You can see, can you see the screen well enough? Okay, so, you can see that in each of those different areas, we're looking at private resources, national resources, and state resources, and so, in our private resources of our $19 million goal, we've raised a little bit over 7.5 million, so we've got about 12 million to raise. We've been working with the committee to identify where that would come. That's private funding that you'd probably be familiar with, our local foundations and our local folks. And then, our national resources, we're looking at roughly 15 million, and we've got 8 million committed already, so about 7 million left to go. And then, with our state resources, and we're really making quite a bit of headway there with more than 6 million committed and about 3.5 million to go. So, overall, our goal of 44,671, we're, like I said, just about at 50%. So, the work that's going to happen from here, we're really going to be putting pedal to the metal on the private resourcing from now and probably for the next 18 months. So, we expect to, we expect to reach our goal, you know, and I don't usually go out on these things with the expectation that I won't reach goal. And so, we're, everybody's been working hard. Grand Rapids Whitewater is an organization that's been wonderful to work with, and Richard's been a terrific CEO, so we really feel like we're making great headway on the funding. So, Richard's going to come back up and talk about the timeline, and then, we'll take questions.
So, when do we start? I mentioned earlier, we have to get permission to get in that river, and so, we hope to be able to submit our formal application to U.S. Fish and Wildlife before the end of the year. And with that, we hope to have what is called an incidental take permit, which allows us to go in the river and start working and start relocating snuffbox mussels in '19. And that, if we can get those relocated soon enough in '19, where we've got a season to do some construction, we would like to get in the river in 2019 to work. That's probably a little stretch, so 2020 in the river to work, and that will be that reach, basically from Bridge Street to Fulton, that will be the sequence of the construction. We'll do that piece first, and we've got until 2022 to get that completed. That's a real reach, too. And then, when we finish that, we believe that all the funding with Steve Carey's help will be available at the federal level to start work on the adjustable hydraulic structure. That will be the second thing we do, and then, when we finish the adjustable hydraulic structure, we can go back down to Sixth Street and take out the dam and do what work is remaining there. So, we hope to be finished in late '24 or sometimes in '25 and have the river for all ready and the rapids back in place. And again, thank you so much for allowing Grand Rapids Whitewater to be here tonight, and thank you so much for the support that you gave in the early days when this project needed a partner and what you've done to date. And again, thanks for the opportunity to be here, and if we have any questions, I'd be more than happy or standing to address them.
Good. Thank you, Richard. Questions? Commissioner Mast, did I see your hand?
Nope.
Okay. What's that? Commissioner Melton.
Thank you, Chair. I just have, I have one quick question. The project completion, 2025, will there be any startup of, I mean, any pre-that chances of getting out into whatever has been done by that point?
Yeah.
Or is that, how will they juggle that?
Actually, I mentioned earlier, the reach from Bridge Street or the post office to Fulton.
Yep.
Once that's completed, there could be some activity in there. Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Then, 2025, that's a long time for some of us that are aging faster than others. Are you going to have like a geriatric lane for those of us who'd like to try it and maybe won't be able to navigate it as well?
Well, think about the guy who's trying to get it done.
Well, that's true.
I may be in a walker trying to get out of this. But no, it's very doable by that time, and if we get the right contractor and everything flows as we would like to with permits, we would certainly like to get finished sooner than then, but I think that's a good thing to shoot at.
I'm very excited and would like to see this happen next year, obviously.
Absolutely.
Thank you for your work, very much so.
Thank you so much for allowing me to be here.
Commissioner Bolkowski.
Thank you, Chair, and my apologies for being a few moments late due to my day job. That being said, Commissioner Melton, I can assure you, it will be fully accessible. And, but when the city of Grand Rapids looks at things like accessible launches for kayaks and what have you, is that within that $45 million price tag, or when the city of Grand Rapids has four or five parks and other inputs, like what does the 45 million get us?
The Grand Rapids Whitewater is a part of our project. We will have accesses that will be constructed as a part of that. And then, on top of that, the city is going through this river's edge, riverfall process now, and there will be additional put-ins and steps and things like that put in the project. But we will have additional access when we finish the project.
That will be like fully usable by the public?
Yes.
That's part of the 45 million?
That's right.
It's not just wet?
No, it's not just wet. We have some access in that budget. Thank you.
Commissioner Stack.
Thank you, Chair. Thanks for the report. It may seem simple enough, but what does it take to move a muscle? And is that a component of this that could actually preclude it from going forward?
I don't, no, I don't think it will stop us from going forward, and this is why. We have to do a habitat conservation plan, and that habitat conservation's plan explains exactly the question that you just asked. We have to tell them how we're going to move those mussels. Perfect example is the bridge project, I-196. They had to do the same thing. Actually, it delayed them a while, because what has to happen, we will relocate mussels in two different areas, in two different ways. For below the Sixth Street Dam, what we hope to negotiate, and actually, we'll be on a call tomorrow to have this discussion, and they tentatively agreed to it, is that as we start working in the river, we will build isolation areas, which are those coffer dams that you see at the bridge now. As we build those coffer dams, we will do drawdown of the river in those areas. As we're drawing the water down, we will put people in the river to start getting the snuffbox out and relocate them. So, that's not a dive operation. We can go in as the water go down, we can pick them up and move them. The flip side of that is that the adjustable hydraulic structure, it will be a dive operation. We will go in a year before we start construction, and then, the boundaries that we will be working in, we will go down with divers and pick them up, take them away, pick them up and take them away. And then, they will have GPS little tags put on them, and we'll track them to see what the survival rates are and how they're doing in the habitat that we put them in, and then, we will do the same thing as we go into our area and start improving the habitat, we will monitor that to see how successful we've been in developing new habitat for the snuffbox.
So, did I catch you, you put GPS units on a mussel?
Sure can. It's a little bit of tag.
Just make sure you don't eat it.
And you have little grids that you put them in, and then, you know where they're located, and you go back and check the survival rate and see how they're doing.
I assume this is all required by the state or federal government for you to be able to move a mussel?
It is, yes, sir. That's the conservation plan, mitigation. Yeah.
Commissioner Womack.
Yes, sir. Thank you for coming here today, and I definitely enjoyed this information. Had a few questions. How long have you been raising funds for this project?
Well, Sandy, you may, I've been here a year, and we've been raising funds for a year or so.
Really, the fundraising process started with the feasibility study, which would have been probably in the fall of 2000, late 2015. And so, actual active fundraising started probably about a year ago.
Okay. And when do you expect the capital campaign to be completed?
If all goes as planned, probably within the 18 months, probably. That would be my expectation, anyway, from where we sit right now.
2020?
Yeah.
Okay. And I have some other questions for him, I think. What other projects of this size and magnitude have you been a part of of your company?
You mean my past history? Okay.
No, just a few projects?
Yeah, great. Number one, I was a deputy city manager for the city of Columbus, Georgia, had 200,000 people in it. I did that for about six years, Parks and Recreation Director before that, and managed capital projects, it was probably about $100 million through a sales tax proposition, built an Olympic venue for the 1996 Olympic Games for women's fast pitch softball. When it was in Atlanta, we had the Olympic venue in Columbus, Georgia, built that.
And any that are similar to this water project?
Yes, sir. And then, when I left the deputy city manager's position, I went to Uptown Columbus and managed our downtown, and as a part of that, back in about 1995, '96, there was this vision to breach two dams on the Chattahoochee River in our downtown. And my, I was CEO of Uptown Columbus, we handled that project, and it rolled into Uptown Whitewater Management LLC, which I was the president of, and it was a $26 million project, and it came online in 2013, and it's doing great as we're here talking today. So, yeah, I've had, went through all the construction processes, went through the planning, construction, and then, actually, had the operations side of it after we opened it up.
$26 million project, and this is how much? That was a $26 million project, and this project is?
This project's 40, about 45.
About 45?
Yep.
And when we talk about this, the rapids and the things we're going to be doing along that river, it is definitely going to increase some activity, some recreational activity. Do you know what the impact would be on fishermen and the sport of fishing and some of that activity that's happening in the area?
Yes. The economic impact as far as visitors, it says about 250,000 a year, a lot of those are fishermen and anglers. And one of the things, you know, I talked earlier about having permission to get in the river. What we want to do is to make fishing a lot better on the grand, and our deliberations and the intense review that we're getting in a good way from DNR, who handles that, we feel like we'll be able to accomplish that. So, we think the river will be much better when we finish, and I say that because we have to get those approvals from DNR and DEQ.
There's a few questions I have from some of my constituents in the community.
Sure, absolutely. It was a good question.
A lot of fishermen in there, they just want to make sure.
And to that point, we've had, we meet with steel headers, and, yeah, so, we try to involve those, and we need to do much more in that regard, and we will.
And will any of this project open us up to being more open to having things like Asian carp and those type of specimens that kind of eat at the food that's already the food for our wildlife that's here in the water?
Well, you know.
And are they doing any studies on that? Because I know there's been some problems in parts of the Great Lakes with the Asian carp.
Yeah, and Great Lakes Fisheries Commission, who is one of our partners now, that is why this whole deal with sea lamprey. You know, they are very active in how we manage this adjustable hydraulic structure, when, how are we going to build it? That's why we had to go to great detail and get, we had to go through a vetting process with the Corps of Engineers to make sure this adjustable hydraulic structure would operate the way it was supposed to. And they're doing the same thing with the carp now, as I understand it. I don't, as far as my knowledge of that, it's not very much. I'm pretty sure that it's not affecting this piece of the Grand River just yet.
All right. Thank you very much, sir.
Yes, sir.
Keep up the good work.
Thank you.
Commissioner Honstein.
Thank you, Chair Saulfeld. Richard, welcome. Thanks for taking time out to be with us tonight. When this idea was first floated, I heard numbers, $21 to $26 million to complete it. Now that we're approaching getting started, we're up to 44 million. How confident are we that the 44 million's going to be enough?
Yeah, and let me back it up just a little bit, because that's, I need to address that. The original budget was the construction side, and that's all it was. It didn't have any of all the pre-construction admin running up to it, and even after construction start, it was just a pure construction budget. So, that's why that budget's grown some. And then, in addition to that, you know, the, really, what's going to happen now is we are getting ready to hire a construction advisor that will start vetting all the numbers in that budget as far as construction. And we have a pretty high level of confidence that we can adjust, we can make some adjustments in the design through value engineering to make the number work. The one outstanding question that we have is, is what will be the endgame impact of relocation of snuffbox mussels? Now, we've got a number in the budget, and we feel pretty confident with that number, but something like that, I mean, things could happen, and that's why Sandy is going to keep this fundraising going on, but we feel pretty confident that that number has been vetted enough and that we'll be able to get within that number.
Just a quick follow-up.
Yeah.
You know, you look at the picture that's on the screen right now, it looks a lot different than the Grand River that I grew up in.
Yeah.
And it's very aggressive, and along those same lines of unknowns, there was a time where our waterways were just dumps for industrial waste. I don't know what's underneath the sand in that part.
Right.
Is that a concern for the people that are building this, that once we get started? I mean, I don't want the stuff that's laying still right now to go down and affect Ottawa County and the bench.
Yeah, 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 yeah.
What is the risk assessment of that, and have people really looked hard at it? What is under there, and what is this going to do to that?
Yes. Well, before I came here, they did a lot of geotech study behind the Sixth Street Dam, because that's where that sediment would be, and there was no contamination there that was measurable. So, there's really no concern at this time. That's not to say if we got in that river and turned something up, but that's not likely based on the geotechnical work that they've already done. Yes, sir.
Commissioner Jones.
Thank you, Chair. We have awards coming up, and the county has 1,700 employees, and you guys are proposing an impact of 1,500 jobs. So, I think that's fantastic to have that vision and have done that plan. The question I have is on the number side of things. I was curious what other local governments have committed, and if so, if you can share how much.
Yeah. The city of Grand Rapids has committed $2 million. In addition to that, they've got staff time, and then, they've got, they're going to own this, they're going to own this river and the adjustable hydraulic structure after we put it in place, so there's certainly operations costs that will go along with that, too.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am. Well, yeah, and the state of Michigan and the federal government, the state of Michigan The state of Michigan, we've got, already have $1.5 million now and we're in, hopefully the budget for another 1.5 million in 2019. And then we will continue to be aggressive with Steve's help at the federal level and a partnership with the Great Lakes Fisheries Commission.
Okay. Are there any other questions by somebody who hasn't spoken yet? I see none. I saw one, your hand up, Commissioner Womack. I'll give you a chance to answer.
One quick real question. The fish ladder, would this eliminate it or what impact would it have with the fish ladder?
No, sir.
Just so we can let people know that might be concerned about.
No, sir. The fish ladder will remain in place.
Great.
Yep.
Okay. Sandy, did you have something else? Okay.
So thank you again for your interest. What we'd like to do as a next step is contact the commissioners and if you have any further questions that are specific to your constituencies or any other questions about the technical aspects of it or the numbers, we know that sometimes when you start looking into the information, you start having those kinds of questions and we want to make sure that you have the opportunity to get all your questions answered. So look for some sort of communication from Grand Rapids Whitewater sometime in the next couple of months, within the next few weeks.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Very informative and exciting to see that move forward. Okay, we will move then to 5B on our agenda and we will hear from Steve Carey, who is with Potomac Strategic Development Company. Good evening, Steve.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. And I am frequently referred to as Jim Carey and I'm sorry. But I'm funnier. It's a thrill to be here. As a kid growing up in Ada, I never thought I would be here, so thank you. Let alone being able to carry the Kent County banner on Capitol Hill. It was made very well known to me that we didn't have much time, so I will comply and I would draw your attention to the PowerPoint if I could, tell you a little bit about ourselves. Am I doing this right? There we go. We've represented Grand Valley State since 2004, Mary Freebed, Grand Rapids Whitewater, Bethany Christian Services, and it's a thrill to be able to represent you. So with that, I'd like to turn it over to Karen.
See if I can do this. Some of our additional clients. As Steve said, he was born and raised here in Michigan and I'm the person from North Carolina that gets to accompany Steve to trips here to Grand Rapids and Kent County. But it really is a pleasure to be with you all. We have several colleagues back in DC who will be working on your behalf as well. And today and again tomorrow, we'll be doing a series of meetings with county staff. Today, we met with the sheriff's office, we met with KCCA, Parks and Rec, the Drain Commission, the Health Department. Tomorrow, we'll meet with the Department of Public Works, Veteran Services, and Circuit Court, all to get a better idea of how we can best represent you all in Washington, DC. These are some of the issues that have already been identified by your staff. This is evolving. This is a jumping off point for us, but these are some of the areas where they see concerns and areas where they think that we can be helpful to Kent County in Washington, DC. With that, I'll turn it back to Steve for next steps.
We'll just conclude with this, because I know that you are on a, just a consolidated timeframe. We'll remain available until after the conclusion of the meeting. If you have any specific questions, areas that are important to you, so we can take note, identify opportunities and so forth. And then I know fairly soon, we will establish a process through which Mr. Britt and Matthew Van Zetten will then be able to funnel that information to you. So if you have any additional questions or concerns, we will remain available well after the meeting concludes.
We have an opportunity to ask you, do some questions right now, too.
Very good.
You sound like you were yelling at Senator Schumer again. Is that what the case was?
I yell at everybody there. I'm yelling through the television all the time, as we all are, I'm sure. No, it's allergies, I'm not contagious, my point.
All right, very good. Okay. Commissioner Ponstein?
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. Washington, DC is a funny place. You're going to be dealing with people that receive millions of dollars in campaign contributions and were a group that can't do that. So how is the fight fair, then?
The fight is fair because you have right on your side. You're on the front lines of governing and that's enough. It's not all about campaign contributions, though the media would have you believe that. Most of our clients, Special Olympics, the city of Grand Rapids, Grand Valley State, they don't donate either, but they have good ideas and that's where you come through.
Commissioner Skaggs?
So I guess this is a question for Wayman. What's the budget for this?
25 grand.
Per year?
We're testing them out.
Okay.
And so far, they're doing well.
Okay. And what sort of metrics are we using in this testing?
Well, it will all come out after we get through the process with meeting with the department directors, but the idea would be how many dollars did we receive back from the federal government? How many projects did we, issues that we resolved? Those are the kinds of things we'll be looking for. But it's kind of hard right now to put a number on that until we get through the process.
But presumably, we'll be comparing that to the years past when we did not have.
Yes.
Great. Thanks, Wayne.
Any other questions? Okay. I don't see any, so thank you so much for being here. We hope you have a good time talking to the rest of the department eds and look forward to hearing back from you.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, everyone. It's a privilege.
Thank you. Okay, we move then to agenda item number six, which is public comment. And if there's any public comment tonight, please come forward. You have three minutes to address the commission. Please state your name and your address. I do not see any public comments, so we will move to agenda item number seven, which is our consent agenda, and I will call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I would move the consent agenda.
And there's support by Commissioner Mast. Is there any questions on the consent agenda? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote, so I will call on Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt the consent agenda, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Vonk.
Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes, the consent agenda is adopted.
Thank you. We move then to agenda item number eight, which are our resolutions. We have two tonight. For the first, I will call on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you, Chair Salfeld. I move Resolution 32 of today's date, the addition of eight full-time youth specialists at the juvenile detention slash Circuit Court juvenile detention.
Or, support by Commissioner Corndyke, questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is a roll call vote. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the motion to adopt Resolution 510-1832, Commissioners Skaggs.
Yes.
Corndyke.
Yes.
Womack.
Yes.
Bulkowski.
Yes.
Talon.
Yes.
Hennessy.
Yes.
Melton.
Yes.
Mast.
Yes.
Breavy.
Yes.
Coleman.
Yes.
Voorhees.
Yes.
Ponstein.
Yes.
Steck.
Yes.
Vice Chair Bolter.
Yes.
Commissioners Jones.
Yes.
Morgan.
Yes.
Antor.
Vonk. Yes.
Chair Salfeld.
Yes.
Mr. Chair, you have 18 ayes, zero nays. The motion passes, the resolution is adopted.
Thank you. We move then to 8B and I will call on Commissioner Breavy.
Thank you, Chair. I'd like to move Resolution 33 of today's date, my community dental centers in Walker, the agreement from the Health Department.
Support by Commissioner Jones. Any questions or comments on this item? I do not see any. This is not, I'm sorry. Commissioner Melton?
I have a quick comment. I brought this up at the finance meeting when we were talking about this. For those of us who have a chance to get to the dentist without too much trouble, this doesn't seem like a big deal for, I was introduced to the world of dentistry through our daughter who was not able to, with her insurance, find a place. And after you've made seven, eight, nine, 10 phone calls all around Kent County, I don't mind telling you, it changes very much your perspective on dental care for our persons in Kent County. And she actually ended up at the one on Kalamazoo and has had a fabulous, fabulous experience there. So I'm very excited about this and I hope we will see more of these in the future.
Thank you. Any other comments? I do not see any. This is not a roll call vote, so all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. We move then to agenda item number nine, which is our Public Service Recognition Week. And I will call on Wayman Britt to share with the commissioners and those in attendance about this week, its purpose and why the county is participating. So Administrator Britt.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. We really appreciate the opportunity today to, and we're very proud, to have the opportunity to participate with you and to say thank you to our 1,700 employees, hardworking employees and dedicated employees, to recognize them for the exemplary excellence and the service of others. This is the second year of the Excellence in Action Awards, which we have presented during Public Service Recognition Week and our 21st year of the Performance Management Program from which the awards were identified. When people know that leadership cares about them and supports them, they are more likely to take ownership for their actions and hold themselves accountable for amazing achievement and results. It's been said before, but it's worth repeating, achieving excellence is a hallmark of Kent County, the Board of Commissioners and our elected officials. The Excellence in Action Awards that were presented today are an extension of our board's vision that Kent County be the absolute best place to live and work. The awards are only a small reflection of the outstanding efforts that take place every day in the county to help make this possible. So thank you. And I'd like to ask Vice Chair Bolter, Finance Chair Jones, LHR Chair Stan Steck, Vice Chair Stan Steck, and Minority Vice Chair Hennessy to come to the lecture here and we will conduct the ceremony.
This is a proclamation by the Kent County Board of Commissioners and it is the Excellence in Innovation Award being given to the 17th Circuit Court, the Girls' Court. Whereas this week, May 6 to 12, 2018, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. And we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of the more than 1,600 Kent County employees. And whereas the Performance Management Program seeks to identify excellence in action through programs and services that are innovative, the 17th Circuit Court established a Girls' Court to address the rising offender and recidivism rates being noted in the female teen population. And whereas in collaboration with Community Family Partnership in Wedgwood, the court secured program funding and trauma therapy for the girls and their families. And whereas Girls' Court serves girl offenders by providing intensive treatment, incentives, community-based support while strengthening family relationships. And whereas court staff have received numerous requests to share the program with other community courts, now therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims that the 17th Circuit Court is recognized with the Excellence in Innovation Award for the Girls' Court. And we will have some of the administrators and judges come forth to receive a very heavy glass, very nice glass, and a framed proclamation from all of us to you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much for what you've done. This is a wonderful innovation.
May I just introduce the guests that are here this evening? In true Girls' Court tradition, we have brought the girls to experience their government and. This is really an exercise in strong women helping young women to reach their potential. So we have the women attorneys who represent the girls, my court staff, we have court administration, we have Wedgwood therapists here that do the trauma-based intervention, our female probation officer assigned to the girls, Christine Westmoreland, her supervisor, Marcella Morales Morris, who's been critical in having this group launch, and our two surveillance staff in the back wave your hands at the county commissioners. So it's been a wonderful effort and we thank you for this recognition.
Can I ask everybody to come on up in here? We've got officials. We'll take a circle right behind that.
Girls' Court is an incredibly cool program. It's a new specialty court in the Circuit Court that addresses delinquent girls who come to the court with high-profile risk scores.
I think overall, she's doing really well. She's fun to have in group and.
We are seeing more and more young ladies who are coming to the court's attention for status-type offenses like runaways, truancy, and we were sending them to institutions.
Instead of pushing them out because their originating crimes are low, we assess them as high-risk and bring them into the significant program for girls.
The statistics at the end of 2017 demonstrated that what we were doing was making a significant impact on these young ladies. Their school attendance has improved, their out-of-home placements were reduced, there is a reduction in status offenses. So the great work of our surveillance staff and the probation officer has really been significant.
It is amazing, sort of miraculous, to see these girls come in with a host of very significant problems and leave after they've experienced the good work of an incredible team of women who intervene with these girls, meet success in a very powerful and significant way. So we think we are intervening well with girls who come to the court with high-risk scores and creating lasting, successful impact.
The women who have been participating and putting this program together, the hard work that's been done on the ground level, working day-to-day with these young ladies and their families, it's been, it's made a significant impact and we're very happy to receive this award.
I am honored to read another proclamation by the Kent County Board of Commissioners and to present the Excellence in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award to Prosecutor's Office Hispanic Center Community Engagement Program. Whereas this week, May 6 to 12, 2018, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week. And whereas we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of the more than 1,600 Kent County employees. And whereas the Performance Management Program seeks to identify. County employees, and whereas the Performance Management Program seeks to identify excellence in action through programs and services that advance a culture that demonstrates diversity, equity, and inclusion through active engagement of removing barriers from underrepresented populations in the county or county workplace, and whereas Kent County recognizes the advancement of a culture that demonstrates diversity, equity, and inclusion, and through active engagement removes barriers for underrepresented populations in the county or county workplace. And whereas the Prosecutor's Office established a program with the Hispanic Center to send a victim-witness advocate to the Hispanic Center once a month to provide an open and non-threatening space to meet and discuss issues their clients may be having in the court system. And whereas advocates meet with victims of domestic violence who may be afraid to file a report, witnesses who may be afraid to go to the courthouse, or any other person at the Hispanic Center who may have questions regarding anything pertaining to the criminal justice system, and whereas the program allows for better relations between the criminal justice system and the community. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the Kent County Prosecutor's Office is recognized with the Excellence in Diversity, Equity, and Inclusion Award for the Hispanic Center Community Engagement Program. I'm pleased to present you with this, if you can carry that with your left hand.
Give it to them. They're the ones that actually do it. So, I'm just tremendously proud of this program and all the work they do. It's kind of, you know, makes me look good because they are so willing to participate in it. We couldn't do without them. Breanna and Naomi are the ones who really are the driving force behind it all. And so, it's a great program. We hope to get it going more in the future, get it expanded even more. But we couldn't have done it without people that helped do it like this. So, thank you so much for recognizing it.
This was something Roberto Torres, who was the Executive Director of the Hispanic Center at the time, and we had a meeting with him, and he suggested, "Why don't you guys set up a kind of a satellite office?"
He was hearing that there is an increase of Latino victims who are scared to report that they've been a victim of a crime. And we heard that, we just, we felt that that was very alarming, and we needed to do something.
Making more awareness for the office, making sure everyone knows what we do, that we're here, that we're available. And I think it's also kind of rare, too, that we have two people in the office that are bilingual, and I think that that helps a lot. So, when this opportunity presented itself, I definitely jumped on board right away and wanted to see it through.
We want to serve victims of crimes wherever they are, wherever their background, whatever their, you know, position in life, whatever, wherever they're coming from, we are here to serve them, and that's why we're trying to do this. We're trying to make it easy for any victim. This is a nice, specific program, but that's one of the things we're trying to do for everybody, is to make access and the ability to have your rights heard as a victim for across Kent County.
One of the biggest things that we wanted to do is just to kind of make them feel comfortable and trust us. I don't...I've never asked a victim what their legal status is. That is not my concern. My only thing that I do for the victim is I help them.
Naomi and Breanna, being willing to do that, I think that speaks volumes. They said, "This is something we want to do." They were 100% behind it. They made it easy. You know, I kind of, you know, kind of set the parameters and let them run with it, and they're very willing to do so, and just have done a tremendous job.
I just hope that more people start hearing about what we're doing out there, and that we can continue this program.
To have people come up to you and hug you and, you know, congratulate you, celebrate with you. You know, you do your job and you love your job, but when you have these people crying with you and hugging you so strongly that you almost can't breathe, the hug is so strong, it's incredible.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I am Commissioner Jones, and I just want to comment what nice awards these are. I don't know, you can't...I really never had a chance to look up close till now, and this is really, it's a really pretty award. So, with that, it is my honor to present the Excellence in Community Impact Award to the Health Department, PFAS Contamination Identification Advocacy. Whereas this week, May 6th to 12th, 2018, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week, and we, the Board of Commissioners, celebrate the hard work of more than 1,600 Kent County employees, and the Performance Management Program seeks to impact the community through advancement of excellence where residents' lives, economic opportunities, health, and safety through the caring contribution of county initiatives and services to our community. And the Kent County Health Department became aware of an investigation regarding contaminated groundwater in the Belmont area in April 2017 by the Michigan Department of Environmental Quality. And in the months that have followed, wells of more than 1,000 homes were tested for PFAS. And the Kent County Health Department has been on the front lines of informing residents about their individual test results. And working in cooperation with the Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, the Kent County Health Department has worked to advise residents about the known health consequences of PFAS and the ways to limit exposure. And the Kent County Health Department has organized and conducted two town hall meetings, bringing MDHHS and MDEQ and Wolverine Worldwide to answer questions, establish a website, and regular newsletter that is emailed to more than 1,000 subscribers. Whereas the KDHD and MDHHS are devising a methodology to conduct the agency's largest-ever health impact survey in the area. The Kent County Health Department commitment to acting as a community advocate for residents led the agency to seek federal assistance from the U.S. Environmental Protection Agency. Now therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims Kent County Health Department is recognized with the Excellence in Action Community Impact Award for its advocacy in response to PFAS Contamination Identification. Ed London?
I think you get this, too, right? For pictures, or do we...
Pictures and then video? Is that what we do?
And I just want to say thank you so much for recognizing this team. They do such tremendous job because they're called to serve and not because it's just...
We've come a long ways with PFAS. It was really a term and a subject that we knew very little about a year ago. For that matter, anyone in the public health system anywhere knew very little about PFAS.
And it was a really foreign term, and we began to really investigate deeper into that as our community health, as our partners in public health began to work together in a work group. And part of that was, you know, working with the Department of Environmental Quality, working with Michigan Department of Health and Human Services, but more than anything, creating a collaborative effort within our health department.
We start off from a position of, "What does the community need?" And then we start to use the tools of public health. We use epidemiology, we use communications, we use environmental health sciences, laboratory sciences, to understand all the facets of this issue. And we're still learning. And as we learn, we're sharing those findings with the community so that they can be informed about the issue, and they can make decisions that are in the best interest of them and their families.
What we do at the Health Department is profoundly important, in that people in our community not only respect us, but they expect us to be an agency that is looking out for them.
The work that's been done by our professionals in environmental health, in epidemiology, in administration, our communications director, have all done an amazing job making this a priority, recognizing the fears in the community, recognizing the risks that are present in the environment, and working together to make sure that our community is well-served.
All right. Just waiting for the music to end. I have the privilege of talking about the Veterans Administrative Supportive Housing Program, which I couldn't be more proud to present. So, this is pretty awesome. The Excellence in Collaboration Award, Veterans Administration Supportive Housing Program. Whereas this week, May 6th through the 12th, 2018, is recognized nationally as Public Service Recognition Week, the Performance Management Program seeks to impact the community through advancement of excellence in residents' lives, economic opportunities, health, and safety through the caring contribution of county initiatives and services to our community. The United States VA continued its partnership with Kent County Action, formerly the Housing Commission, and provided 21 additional Veterans Administration Supportive Housing vouchers, which helps continue the goal of eliminating veterans homelessness. Community Action provides the housing choice vouchers and works with veterans to secure housing, while the VA provides case management for our veterans. Efforts of Community Action helped Kent County reach Functional Zero, I hope that's what I think it means, for veterans experiencing homelessness, ensuring they are connected to resources to secure housing, and plans are in place to secure housing for veterans experiencing homelessness in the future. The county's collaborative efforts have also been recognized nationally as a best practice, we're not surprised to hear about that, model to our recruitment strategies, dual case management efforts, number of employed VASH clients, and positive transitions from voucher recipient to self-sufficiency. Therefore be it resolved that the Kent County Board of Commissioners hereby proclaims the Kent County Community Action is recognized with the Excellence in Collaboration Award for expanding the VASH program.
That's awesome. I guess who gets this and who gets that? You want this fancy, it's pretty heavy.
This is huge. I mean, we're talking about housing people, real people here, that need somewhere to sleep, somewhere to call their home, somewhere where they can cook their meals. And we're keeping them off the streets, you know? They're no longer homeless.
It all started in 2009 for our HUD-VASH program. The vouchers that came to our area for Kent County Housing Commission, these vouchers were designed to provide supportive housing for our veterans who are facing homelessness, either chronically homeless or transitional homeless. The program started off with 25 vouchers. As of today, we are at 174 vouchers.
Definitely not get it done alone. So, for the HUD-VASH program, we work with, directly with the VA through Healthcare for Homeless Veterans. They do clinical case management with the veterans, and then they also do all the referrals to us for veterans who are homeless. And then we work together to get people housed and then help keep them in housing once they lease up. And then, community-wide, we worked with the Functional Zero Campaign to End Veteran Homelessness in Kent County. Community Rebuilders was the lead agency in that, and we provided the vouchers as a permanent supportive housing resource.
I myself am a veteran, so I feel very fortunate that I was given the opportunity to work for the county where I can touch people's lives. That matters to me.
For me, it's to see people progress and reach their goals once they get into housing.
The need is so great and was so great, we've put a major dent in the issue, but there's still a lot, a lot of work that's left to do.
And the final award tonight is the Chairman's Award, and I'd ask the A360 Implementation Team and the KCCA Merger Team to come forward to the podium. So, this is about grit and determination, and there's times in our lives when we're out front pioneering new paths, when we work to identify a better way to meet a need, maybe a more efficient need, or maybe to increase our profit, or sometimes maybe it's just caring for someone who is sick or hurting. And there are times on that journey when the road is not always smooth. There can be unexpected turns, inclement weather, or our Michigan favorite, potholes. It's when these speed bumps show up that we discover who has the backbone, the tenacity, the perseverance, the endurance, the courage, the resolve, and the strength of character to move forward to find a solution. And so, tonight, I want to recognize two groups who... two groups of employees who, with the 2018 Chairman's Award. Now, both have demonstrated this grit, tenacity, and perseverance to pioneer these new paths, these new roads, even when obstacles sometimes existed. So, first, let's recognize the A360 Implementation Team. Maybe everybody that's there raised their hand that's part of that group. Thank you. They've worked diligently over the past three years to implement an integrated financial management system. So, from fiscal services, HR, and IT, so forgive me if I mispronounce any names here, we have Shara Richard, Janice Rockburn, Shayna Scott-Salmon, Mary Beth Ventil, Maria Cornau, Michelle Visser, Stacy Stefis, Brian Holt, and Jerry Yon. And our second group that we'd like to recognize with, and the key employees that assisted with the successful KCCA merger in order to deliver more effective and efficient community services. I know that's something that had been in work for quite some time. So, from KCCA, IT, fiscal services, human resources, and facilities management, we have Susan Cervantes, Brenna Kotschka, Joni Leaming, Liz Kaiser-Berns, Adam Zavisha, Stephanie Hernandez, Stephanie Lee, Mark Rao, and Tim Beck. The characteristics I identified earlier are essential in today's world and are not always appropriately recognized or valued. Tonight, I want to take a moment to say congratulations and thank you to these employees. They represent the quality and strength of the Kent County workforce and the capabilities we have to forge new paths as we work together to improve the quality of life here in Kent County. Thank you. Let's close this out by once again thanking all those who were honored tonight. Thank you for your hard work. Okay, we then are up to item number 10 in our agenda, which is a one-minute public comment period. If there's any public comment, one-minute public comment. I do not see any, so we will move to item 11, which are our reports, and we'll begin with Commissioner Talan.
Thank you Chair, the Grand Rapids Downtown Development Authority met yesterday, want to report some of the things that were approved to spend partially county tax dollars on. First of all, a pilot project for a separated bike lane on Division from about the highway to Leonard. This will be a separated lane that has little posts about every 30 feet to kind of keep cars away from that bike lane, make it more safe, at least feel more safe. It also is going to include some accessibility improvements along the way as part of that project. Approval for planting an additional 140 trees downtown, improvements to Newberry Street, which you may know as the Sixth Street Bridge turns into Newberry Street once you cross the river, some nice improvements there. A reconstruction of Sheldon Street, which is across from the YWCA downtown, from just south of Fulton, and that's the first step of a total reconstruction all the way down Sheldon to the Diocese. It's changing it from the current Boulevard to a very pedestrian-friendly type of street. The addition of new lighting on Division Avenue in the Hartside District, which has been asked for for a long time. Approval of a budget for 2019, which funds 85 initiatives that are part of the GR Forward Plan. And what I'd like us to recognize is that the DDA is going to capture $5.7 million of property taxes anticipated next year. About $600,000 will be coming back to units as the gain sharing. We saw some of that come back recently here. And finally, the first movies in the park will be happening on June 8.
Thank you. Commissioner Wolkowski.
Thank you Chair. I'm always, one of my favoritest meetings here was our evening meeting a year and a half ago, when 60 African-American males came forward and said, "We need to do something better with warrant enforcement." And so I'm reporting on the Friend of the Court Community Advisory Committee, which I got appointed to as part of the recommendations that I worked on with Commissioner Cornike and Commissioner Voorhees. So great things continue to happen at Friend of the Court. It, yeah, I won't go into all the details, other than to say the Responsible Parenting Program continues to grow, and the early paternity determination process is moving forward with good speed as well. Because again, it's connecting fathers to their responsibility, mainly fathers, to their responsibility as soon as possible. And I want Commissioner Voorhees to know that, he coined a phrase in that process, that "We have a friend of the court, why don't we have a friend of the family?" So I'm always reminding the Friend of the Court that he needs to work on the funding for the Friend of the Family to really help families navigate that Friend of the Court system. Because the court has plenty of friends, we met many of the court's friends today, but families could have one or two extra ones. So good things happening across the street.
Thank you. Commissioner Cornike.
Thank you Chair. Sofield, a quick update on the Gerald Ford International Airport. The April numbers are in, and the year-over-year passenger activity is up 14.97 percent, which makes our year-to-date number about 15.5 percent. Good news out at the airport, one of the economic drivers of the county is doing very well. That means the economy of the county, I'm sure, is doing as well. Master Plan update is close to completion, should have that done by the 1st of July. Thank you.
Great news, thank you. Commissioner Stack.
Thank you Chair. Why do I always have to go after the great news? [laughter] Yeah, it's like, I feel like Chicken Little. Well, unfortunately, we do continue to be in a very difficult situation in our behavioral health world, and the crisis has not abated. We are in fact, perhaps, one step closer to the cliff at this point. We do have a team that is aggressively negotiating with MDEHHS to look for a solution that will stabilize this system, and hopefully preserve our public component of the system, and avoid any interruption in services. But I have to report, we are one step closer to that kind of catastrophe. We are hoping that we will have a strategy yet, but it is, it's a challenge. Second thing I wanted to report on is the Dedicated Village Subcommittee has met now on three occasions. We had a great presentation from the First Step folks at the last meeting. My colleagues, Commissioner Breevy, Commissioner Mast, Mr. Skaggs are with me at that committee. We have one more meeting scheduled, though we'll see how we get through the discussions at that meeting and whether or not we're able to reach a conclusion then, but hopefully we still meet our objective of reporting by, I think, June when?
June 30.
June 30. We should be able to do that. And then the last thing, which is good news, I was able to attend an open house for Centria, which is a entity, an organization that provides services, autism services throughout the state. They have opened a new facility in the city of Walker, which is incredibly good news for our behavioral health community, because we have not been able to meet, or even come close to meeting, the autism service demands in this community. This organization's facility will almost by itself take care of our waitlist, so it's a great progress, it's a great new facility, so.
Thank you. Vice Chair Bolter.
Thank you Mr. Chair. As legislative chair, I get to continuously fill vacancies on a lot of our service committees. So we have two more, Veteran Service Committee and Kent District Library Board, Region Seven, and I would like to announce a subcommittee of myself, Commissioner Cornike, and Commissioner Talan to be, to meet soon, to fill those vacancies.
Very good. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, thank you Chair. Being chairperson of Asset Michigan Works Board, I wanted to make a report that we had a Michigan Career Quest Day, and that had exposed over 9,000 students to some of the exciting job opportunities and high-demand industries here in Kent County. Kids, teachers, guidance counselors, local employers got together to learn about the successful careers that children should be preparing for in the future, and they do that every year, and it went very great. Also had a chance to sign off on a grant we received at Asset for the 2018 Summer Youth Program that will be run by Michigan Works that will employ a lot of the youth this summer. So that's the report I wanted to add today.
Okay, thank you. Any other reports? I didn't see any, so we will move then to Agenda Item 12, which is miscellaneous, and I will begin by calling on Commissioner Ponstein.
Thank you Chair Sofield. Great presentation about our great employees. A lot of time and effort went into these videos. I know a lot of counties are really active in social media. I hope we can put these videos out in as many places as we can. I know most of the elected officials here have Facebook pages that they can share on that. The more we get out the news on what we do and just how good we do it, the better. I know when I was first elected, the former person I sat in this seat, Marv Hidoma, told me, said, "A lot of times, just people really don't know what, a lot of times, we just need help navigating the system." But what we saw today is, should be firsthand, all the good things that the county does, and that's just the tip of the iceberg. I know Darryl used to say that county government is A to Z, airport to the zoo, well, we spun off those two, and what's left is everything in between. So it's a great story to tell, we should try to get it out as much as possible. I wanted to quickly comment on the lobbyists, you know, I'm all for it, I think we need a voice in Washington, I think we need a voice in Michigan. And hopefully, the board stays up to date on what issues we're going to be lobbying. Overlooking the PowerPoint, I don't see anything about infrastructure, the international, I mean, the internet sales tax is a big issue on the federal level, tax-free muni bonds, which affects this county, wasn't on that. But what I didn't see on the getting to know the issues in the meetings, is that there's other people that help us make Kent County great that aren't directly Kent County. You know, the road commission needs to be spoken to. The issues that's facing infrastructures, our roads, a lot of those are federal dollars. The right place is constantly lobbying on the behalf. The more people we have lobbying on the same issues, the better. Today, once again, one of the most irritating issues of latest, is that every time you hear the word automated cars, all they talk about is Detroit. We've got some great auto vendors here and suppliers that should be part of that conversation. It shouldn't just be all the east side of the state when it comes to those federal dollars. The zoo and the airport also need, you know, I think the airport's probably got lobbyists themselves, but the more we are speaking the same thing from different ways, the better it's going to be for them, just how good this county is, and what the needs are locally. I don't think the people in Washington know what county government does.
Thank you. Commissioner Melton.
Thank you Chair. I just have a couple things, I'm sure that Commissioner Womack is going to maybe fill in a little bit more, but my husband and I attended the RED Project Community Forum at Lincoln last week or two weeks ago. It was not as well-attended as I would like to have seen, but the persons that were there certainly seemed to be very interested in the information that was shared about our opiate use and ways and means of phasing those out to go on to other types of medications in the hospital, all the way down to how do you take care of a loved one or someone that you see who perhaps has overdose. So it was very informative. And then, on a more personal note, in Kentwood itself, six of our elementary schools in Kentwood have been recognized among the top 100 elementary, middle school, schools in the state of Michigan. So we're the only district to have that many.
Great. Commissioner Womack.
Yes, I was also at the Project RED with naloxacan, it's something they've been giving out that can revive people that have OD'd, and they've been teaching people who are over 18 how they can help with people who are having those overdoses, because we've had a large excess of people overdosing in Kent County. Those numbers are rising because of the opiate addiction, and anyone over 18 can also get that from their doctors, and they don't have to be someone that's in danger. They just never know when you're going to have a family member, someone you might not even know is on opiates. So I do support the RED Project. I just really enjoyed today to see the awards that's going to the people in Kent County, the departments, the people that work here, that make all of us who are part of Kent County look good. I mean, so I just really enjoyed seeing that today, and I just wanted to add that with some of the diversity, there are just so many department heads here that have that as a priority. Excellence is a priority here at Kent County. You want to thank Darius Quinn also for his hard work. I just want to thank Hispanic Center for partnering with us, and really want to thank Chris Becker, because sometime Chris Becker, being a prosecuting attorney, he's not going to make decisions that's going to make everybody happy. When you go in that job, you got to be strong enough to know, I'm not going to make everybody happy all the time. But I can say, when people come to me in my neighborhood and say they need to, you know, they want to talk to Chris, or they want to ask Chris about something, you know, and when I heard him speaking today, he said something that made me want to say, "Yeah, Chris." And I just thought about all my years in my community, you know. That seat has never had a person in it that our community called on first name, you know. It's like, some people think it's disrespectful not to say Mister this or Mister that, but I just think he's given an ear to the community. I still think there's some historical things with justice that we have to move for, for minorities, because we definitely know there's some work to do, but at least the community feel there's an ear there that hasn't been there for as long as we could remember, that they are at least being listened to, they're being addressed. We've had Chris on the show a number of times, he's been on a number of radio shows, he's been in the newspaper. His thing with restorative justice for the juveniles is really coming through the community with good rave reviews, so I want to say to Chris Becker, keep up the good work, and to just all our departments, I just really want to put out there that I'm very proud of how good you make us all look. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. Commissioner Talan.
Thank you Chair. Couple things, one is just a reminder of the MAC Regional Summit that's coming up on June 11, and encouraging my colleagues to think about attending that, it looks like a pretty good agenda. The second thing is, just to explain, that Veterans Functional Zero actually means that if a veteran in Kent County becomes homeless, there are resources to house that person temporarily and to get them assistance to get into permanent housing. Doesn't mean that everybody, that there's never anyone that's homeless, but it means we have the resources to temporarily house people and then assist them in getting permanent housing. It's a pretty amazing bar to get to, we've heard about it before, but really appreciate the work that we heard about again earlier tonight. Thanks.
Thank you. Commissioner Hennessy.
Just a little bit of a report, it's about the John Ball Zoo, our nonprofit John Ball Zoo, and they have been seeking out the opinions of neighbors for the uses of the park portion that's often been a point of controversy. About 1,000 postcards were sent out for an evening meeting to generate people's ideas on what they wanted to see in the park. It was followed up Saturday morning with an open house where schematics were provided for people to further comment on. About 4,000 postcards were sent out to neighbors. So the neighborhood opinion is really being sought out as the zoo goes forward, in particular as it begins to really seriously plan for the use of the park. And given that we talked about my community dental centers today, I'll make mention, since my sister's a dentist, that the Michigan Dental Association and its foundation are holding a two-day dental treatment, series, dental treatment for any adult, any child, they don't care what your insurance is, with it, without, with you. You've seen a dentist in the past. It's going to be held on Friday, June 1, and June 2 at Kelvin College. The doors open at 6:00 a.m. on Friday, June 1. People, they said that people oftentimes line up after midnight. They will, you know, pain and infections come first, but they will do cleanings, fillings, tooth removals, even root canals, they won't do crowns, or, you know, things that become too elaborate for the day. But this is an annual giving to the community of the Michigan Dental Association, bringing it here. They may see up to 2,500 people. It's operated on donations and the volunteer dentists, and about 100 dentists are usually participants in these two days. This is really kind of cool for our community that it's here in Michigan.
Great. Commissioner Wolkowski.
Well, Commissioner Hennessy stole most of my thunder. I actually have flyers in English and Spanish that I'll get to Pam for that event at Kelvin College on the 1st and 2nd of June, and so that y'all can post those on Facebook and other places, yes.
So you're yielding your time?
Oh, I'm pretty sure it's like at the Prince Center or something, that, no, no, what's that?
You're not yielding your time.
I'm not, my time, well, I'm done now, but, sorry.
All right. Any other miscellaneous? Commissioner Ponstein.
I want to thank, but I wanted to thank the Bissell Foundation for assisting with their annual drive to empty the shelters. It's just Kent County, this is hard swipe that they take care of.
Great. Okay, two quick items. Number one, pretty cool, the Public Service Recognition Week awards. What you maybe don't recall is, I believe that that was the, started by Administrator Britt last year, right at the time that he knew he was going to become interim, so this is kind of the second year of that, so I think that's gone very well, and I think it's a great idea, and it's a great way to recognize our employees, that we have lots of good ones, but it's those ones that do special recognition. The other item, tonight is a evening meeting, we instituted, I believe, three of these this year. We instituted, I believe, three of these this year. You know, let me know any feedback, if you have thoughts on it, or Pam, let her know. We are thinking about some other changes for next year in terms of how we do meetings that will hopefully make things be a little more efficient, so feel free to let me know on that. That's all I have, so we move to Agenda Item 13, and I call on Commissioner Voorhees.
Well, thank you, Chair Saul Feld. I do move to adjourn, subject to the call of the Chair Thursday, May 24, 2018, at 8:30 a.m.
All in favor, indicate by saying aye. Any opposed, we are adjourned.
You think they were ready to get up?
I'm in the no-go still, so I don't get those anymore.
Thank you.